I call to order the meeting of the Crew, Virginia's Regular Town Council for the February 9th, 2015. Will you all please rise for the invocation led by Ms. Dalton and pledged by Mr. Fisher?
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy highest kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
With allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you tonight. We have two of our council people. One is away and one is under the weather. And our police chief is under the weather, so as all the communities around, these little bugs are affecting us. But we are so glad that you came out, especially with the weather changing and the temperature dropping. We're going to start the evening out with the delegation from the public and citizens' comments. And our first individual who has asked to be put on the agenda is Mr. Greg Marston. And he wanted to speak on supporting the hemp resolution that passed the Virginia House and now moves on to the Senate.
Yeah, and let me just update that. Anyone who don't know me, my name is Greg Marston. I've lived here in Ottawa since 1976, and then Linderburg prior to that. There is also a companion Senate bill that has passed also. And my understanding is the two deals will be incorporated into one, the HB 1277. And it's done despite some of the hiccups in the committees, with it almost, you know, giffy if it was going to get out of the committee or not. Once it hits the floor, election year, everybody's on the ballot, so I think everybody came in okay. It's interesting, I was thinking about, as I don't use notes when I speak, and I don't stand behind there any longer either. I was thinking, as you say in the Lord's Prayer, some of the things he said about, "Give us this day our daily bread, forgive the trespasses." "Forgive the trespasses of the people who made this plan that God gave us for our daily bread and our daily use, to forgive those people in 1937 that turned out against us." And if you know, if we're really serious about his will being done, let's quit punishing the cousin of somebody who hasn't done anything. And I think, you know, people understand you've got a lot of misinformation about the hemp, because I did before I started. But I'll tell you right now, everything I have on right now is made of hemp. And as a place I can throw a baseball and hit the roof of the building with, we could be making these jackets in. And I think we owe it, not to ourselves, because we've blown it for ourselves. I mean, the lot we have is a lot we're stuck with. But for our kids and our grandkids, even if this is just a chance, a wild chance, of something that may not ever materialize, you folks have a chance to make history tonight, because you would be the first ones with an opportunity to pass this. Everybody else has been reluctant to because of misinformation. So I'll use this little quick analogy and I'll be quiet. There's not a place in this district you can go that serves alcohol on premises that you can't order a margarita for yourself and a virgin margarita for your child. And we don't blink our eye at that. And we know, we know what the purpose of that is for. It's to train young kids to grow up and drink alcohol like their parents. And then you got heartburn with something that could create jobs, put people to work. And I'm going to be quiet, because Flip's going to tell you a little something about something he's found out the industrial hemp will do for him.
It's hard to follow. Most of y'all know me. I'm Stephen Flippen. I'm 32. And I was diagnosed with epilepsy 17 years ago, when I was in 10th grade. And in 2008, that epilepsy became uncontrolled, to the point where I couldn't work, I couldn't drive, and just made life pretty bad. And tried about every medication that you can try. And none of those medications controlled my seizures 100 percent. And so recently, a friend of mine sent me a vial of CBD hemp oil, which is made from the industrial hemp plant. And it's made from actually the seeds and the stalk of the industrial hemp plant. And since I started using that product 12 days ago, I have gone completely seizure-free, without any hiccups at all. Last time that happened was over two years ago. So it's a pretty big thing for my wife and myself. And, you know, he told you about the House and Senate bill, let it pass. And the difference with what he's talking about essentially with the clothes and whatnot, I'm kind of talking about the medical side of it. Because not only can you make all these, you know, ropes, clothes, whatnot, you can also help a lot of people out for medication. And I think that the product I have, as a matter of fact, it's made from hemp oil, industrial hemp oil. And it's the only company that I know that makes it. And that's why I have it. It's legal in all 50 states. If you want hemp oil other than that, you'd have to go to Colorado or some other place that has medical marijuana laws. And that hemp oil has THC in it, which is the big no-no or whatnot. So I think by a grant of this resolution, it not only helps myself and Mr. Marston, but if we could get, you know, South Side together, a few counties together. He, I don't know if he gave you his resolution sheet, but it's got a company from Germany that he's already been talking to. And the product that I have, it comes from Europe, because they don't make it in the U.S. But if, since this House and the Senate bill has been passed, you know, if we can go through and have a handful of counties in Virginia that support it, once the governor finally does sign it, if he does, then that'll set the company that he's talked to, as well as other companies, that already have, you know, a group of counties in Virginia that are ready for, well, what's the correct word? That embrace and will allow them to come in, and not only them, but also the local farmers around, to grow this stuff. And that will bring a lot of money to the county, to the surrounding area, for not only clothes and, you know, the vast majority of things that hemp produces, but also for medical means. And, you know, that's a big deal, if I could get my medication from a farmer in South Side. So that's about it. And, you know, I just, the last thing I'll say is, the hemp oil has helped me with epilepsy. There's also been a Senate bill that has passed that is allowing for medical marijuana to be given to, in the oil form, to people with epilepsy in Virginia. Now, I'm not a real political person, so I know it has to go to this place and this place and get signed or whatnot. So I don't know if it's going to completely go through. But that's the beauty about the industrial hemp. It's legal, so you don't have to worry about that. And it does help me with epilepsy. But many of y'all might have, or might know people that have, I'm just going to throw out a few of these, bear with me. Alzheimer's, dementia, anxiety, arthritis, autism, cancer, hypertension, stress, which I'm not being there with. Diabetes, fibromyalgia, glaucoma, heart disease, Parkinson's. The list goes on and on. And all these disorders have been scientific, they have scientific research that says hemp oil will either help or aid in helping with all these disorders. So thank you, and that's about all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to go sit in the front row.
Okay, thank you. Before, Greg, did you have something else?
I'll just wrap up with just a few facts. The first time the House of Urgencies met in 1619, we hear about, you know, certain things. The same people that said you can't play cards, you can't roll dice, you can't get drunk, you can't be lazy, you have to go to church, said you must plant hemp. That came out of the first session in the oldest legislative body in the Western Hemisphere. The other thing I would say to you is, even after it became illegal to grow, during World War II, the federal government needed, our military needed hemp. And the Philippines would be occupied by Japan, that was our largest importer of hemp at the time. And so, once again, we went back to what the House of Urgencies had said, and we planted. Soon as the war was over, it was gone again. In 1999, this very same governing body passed a House joint resolution in support of industrial hemp to pursue it as a cash crop pool in Virginia. And here we are in 2015, we haven't made a move yet until now. You heard Flip's story, and again, like I said, I mean, if that's not worth taking a chance on, I don't know what is.
Thank you. Counsel, before I ask any of the public, do any of you have any questions for the?
I did have some, but Cheryl, it looks like she's ready to ask a question.
Do I look like I was getting ready to say something?
I always look like I'm getting ready to say something.
I was wondering, why is there so much resistance? Do you think, because I agree with her exactly? It's wonderful.
I can answer that. I think, and you might have a different opinion, but I think that, like I said, if you think about medical marijuana.
I don't want to be in the picture, I'm sorry.
Medical marijuana, in the U.S., you got medical marijuana, and then you got the states that have marijuana just legal. And, you know, you can walk around with it or whatsoever. And so, those are the only two facets that people that I know of really think about when they think about marijuana or cannabis in the U.S. They don't look at the cousin or the hemp side, because they don't know that there's a difference.
There's a bigger, there's somebody must be making big bucks.
Oh, yeah.
Because hemp is not produced.
Canada.
Or else you wouldn't be getting all this resistance over the years.
It's, I mean, it was done politically, because at the time, Henry Ford and Diesel both intended, Diesel intended for his engine to run on hemp fuel. Henry Ford made a car out of hemp and ran on hemp fuel in 1941, and he beat on it with an ax and couldn't put a dent in it. And so, when did we start really becoming chemically dependent as far as manufacturing things? Not because it was better, but because it was cheaper, more money could be made. And the labor force could be taken out of this country. If you keep the hemp here, if you keep the raw material here, you keep the jobs here. When we did away with nature's way of providing the natural resources to make the products here and made it where they could be boxed up and shipped off to China and made there just as easy as they're made here, that's where we went downhill.
Well, I've been reading, it was really hard put to find any reason not to. And I thought, why aren't we, and farming, we're farmland. This is farmland.
Exactly, that's what.
Why? And, hey, one of the impoverished areas in Virginia.
And speaking of that, I don't know the specifics again, but I do know that hemp, it has Canada and Europe, or the big industrial hemp producers. And Canada, you can only, it only has one growing season because of the weather. You can have up to three. You can have up to three growing seasons with this product. You don't have to, I worked at the Tech Research Center, so I knew when you would plant tobacco, the next year you couldn't plant tobacco in the same.
Field.
Field. You don't have to worry about that. It actually, I guess, regenerates the earth or helps the earth. Yeah, and you don't have to worry about the chemicals. You don't, as much. I mean, there is some chemicals involved, but I still have a hoodie that has a stain on it from where I was spraying tobacco over 10 years ago. But, so those are the big things.
Greg, I'd send you some concerns, and I still have these concerns. With the bill itself, according to the bill, industrial hemp means all parts or and varieties of plant cannabis sativa cultivated or possessed by license grower, whether growing or not, that contains a concentration of THC that is no greater than that allowed by federal law. So the bill itself says that the THC content is dependent on whatever federal law is. So if the federal government were to do away with, say, prohibition on marijuana and allow essentially any THC content, wouldn't that mean that industrial hemp could therefore, according to Virginia law, be any THC content?
It would, except for the fact you can't be a little bit pregnant. You either have it or you don't. And no matter what you do with the industrial hemp, you're not going to get that level of THC.
And that's why the oil that I have is legal, because it's made from industrial hemp. It's not made from cannabis that, or marijuana that you would go to in Colorado and get, that's been cultivated or synthetically made with a lower dose to just specifically be for epilepsy or, you know, certain diseases and whatnot.
And I'd hate to put her on the spot, but since she's in the back. This rule, has the.
Has a long meaning to come to, doesn't it?
Have the Commonwealth's Attorney Association evaluated the bill, and how are their?
We discussed it two weeks ago. We chose to take a non-position on it, just because we feel like we need more information. I think our concern is testing procedures that we have currently, and if that would be a problem. I think there are some people that worry that if someone were transporting marijuana, that their excuse would be, "Well, I thought it was industrial hemp." And then, of course, to be convicted of knowingly possessing something, you had to know where it is. We really didn't discuss it at length very much. We didn't think that it was going to be a big issue. We have a lot of other fish to fry. So I would say, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Greg, I haven't been to talk to him about it. But in reality, it's not, I guess it's questionable whether you say it's legal or illegal under federal law, but the DEA's not giving licenses. So I guess my question in all of this, maybe you can answer that for me, is why are we making such a big deal of it when even if we said that this was completely legal in Virginia, the DEA still has to give farmers licenses? And my understanding is they're not doing that.
You're confusing the two cousins, because the industrial hemp is being licensed.
I was just checking, because I did some research over the past couple of weeks.
It's all being licensed under research.
Right, in 10 states.
And it has a certain criteria it has to meet. It has to be fenced in. The locations are on file with the permit. They know exactly where it is. And to answer the question about pulling somebody over, going up Interstate 95 with a truckload of marijuana, or a trunkload, it's not going to look the same, because you're not growing it for the same thing. When you grow marijuana to sell like that in the illegal trade, you don't want it to seed out. You want it to do nothing but grow buds. You don't want it to spend time making seeds. And with the hemp, industrial hemp, it is grown specifically to create seeds. You can't have a 100-acre field of male and female plants together. And to start with, if you put the marijuana anywhere near it, it's going to cross-pollinate. And the cross-pollination will not make the THC go up in the industrial hemp. It will make it go down in its cousin.
I don't think that's certainly a concern of mine. I think it was a concern that was raised in my association, because we weren't educated very much on it. I will tell you that several rural areas, I spoke up. I said that there was a big interest in my county. Dinwiddie also mentioned the same thing, that I think that the more urban areas are easy to discount it, because they don't need something like this. It's not going to benefit them. And so I did speak up on behalf of our county and said, "Well, I think it's something that we want to look into at least, because we have farmers who have farmland that needs to be farmed with a crop that's valuable to them." But again, my personal concern with the research I've done is that even if we did that, how hard is it to get, I mean, I don't understand, you just mentioned that the only licenses they're giving are for research purposes.
For research, at this point in time. Now, when the federal, now, there is a farm bill at the federal level right now that will make it, you'll be able to do it all. The way this 1277 bill is written, let's say that, well, let's just say they only take action on the industrial hemp, and it's May 1st, after the General Assembly, even the veto sessions are over with. The way this bill is written, the Department of Agriculture can go ahead and promulgate rules, and we won't have to go back through another General Assembly session to get on track with whatever the feds do. So the language in the bill is good in that respect. That it does allow some movement within the state agency and the federal level to go ahead and get that started even between sessions. And I think that's a good thing. One question to ask, okay, I mean, be realistic. I grew up Iranian. I know what goes on. First of all, you can get the stuff around here right now if you want it. It's here. It's in town. It's probably within that same baseball I could hit the garment factory with. I could probably hit the bag of marijuana if I knew where to throw it at. But how much time do y'all spend with people being ripped off with things like oregano? How do you tell the difference in a bag of oregano than a bag of marijuana?
I didn't think that was a valid point. It was just an argument.
And I'm not picking at you. I'm just, you know.
Counsel, do any of our council members have any other questions from our speakers?
I do have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
And I had, again, mentioned it to Mr. Marston. You're asking us to support HB 1277, correct? The resolution you drafted and we saw does a little more than that. It asks us to support that, but also goes after the federal government and their rules and regulations and policies. So I actually drafted a substitute resolution. I'm going to pass around to council and copy for you. That it essentially does the same thing. It supports HB 1277, but without going after the federal government. And it also, I'll read it aloud for those in the room. "Whereas industrial hemp is defined as all parts or varieties of plant cannabis sativa cultivated or possessed by license grower, whether growing or not, that contain a concentration THC that is no greater than that allowed by federal law. And whereas, when properly regulated by the Commonwealth of Virginia, industrial hemp has the potential to provide significant economic benefits to producers and manufacturers." Scratch that last "and," counsel. "Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Crew supports the underlying economic development potential of delegate Joseph Yoseph Hill HB 1277, and be it further resolved that the town of Crew is only addressing the issue of economic benefits of industrial hemp production, is only speaking of the non-psychoactive potential or actual uses of cannabis, is intentionally silent on current state and federal law regarding THC in all forms, and reserves the right to offer our opinion on those issues at a later time." So we'd be saying that we absolutely support the economic benefits. We support the bill. Anything else, any of the other issues that we have with industrial hemp, we're not speaking to.
Any comments from our council? Are you wanting to put that into motion?
I would so move that we adopt this resolution.
Okay. It has been moved. Do I have a second? Okay, no second.
Could I have asked Greg what he thought about this? Since we didn't pass it anyway.
You can certainly bring it back up for another vote.
Did you see any?
Despite popular opinion of not hard to get along with people that want to work along with me. I may have no heartburn with it. If that would make the difference in his passing or not, absolutely do it. If that's going to make the rest of y'all vote no, because he changes it, then no, don't do it. If I can leave here with y'all approving something tonight, whatever that takes, do it.
Can we find out how everybody's going to vote, then we'll know.
Y'all don't have your meeting before the meeting, like most of these boards do.
Okay, counsel, did I entertain any discussion before?
Well, this doesn't have any, I understand the resolution that council members have. The paper that Mr. Marston just handed out, is that a quote from delegate Tommy Wright?
This is the resolution that he was.
Yeah, but I was.
That's in committee. Had it been up to Tommy, and Tommy's vote alone, this bill would have been being in committee.
Well, this quote doesn't quite make sense to me. "I support anything that will help the farmers as far as diversifying. In my area in particular, I don't really think it will be of tremendous use for the crop." What does that mean?
You have to ask your delegate. I do not have an answer for that.
Frankly, that bothers me.
And if you have any doubt to the authenticity of it, those discs that I dropped off at the town hall, that section from the hearing is on there.
No, I don't have any doubt about the authenticity. I don't understand what it means.
And that's the whole reason why I'm doing what I'm doing. I hate politics. It was just something that was pushed upon me, and I compare it to going to the whore block, because everybody likes bacon. Well, somebody's got to feed the pigs if you want to have bacon.
I think a lot, I'm sorry, I don't know if my hands.
Mr. Simpson, do you have anything that you would want to question? And Mr. Fisher? Okay, can I, I'm open to entertaining a motion again.
Well, regarding the two resolutions, does the rest of council have an opinion on the first one, on that Mr. Marston gave to us?
I'm in agreement with the hemp production, until somebody can tell you a negative, which I have not heard. I have not heard a negative in all of that. I've read all afternoon, and I kept saying, "Will somebody argue this with me?" I mean, I'm hearing all this good stuff that I know. And I don't know why, like I am, that he doesn't think it's a crop. Isn't that a crop, if you're producing some? Is there some definition to crop that I don't know? But anyway, regardless of why he stuck that in there, I think it's a wonderful thing. I would like to be bought.
So you're for the economic benefits of?
to vote on THC tonight, okay?
Right, right. No, absolutely. And I was just trying to make it a little more palatable for, for everyone else to ensure that we are not speaking to THC or anything, any potential negatives that could come from this bill. We are simply supporting the bill and the economic benefits of industrial hemp. So with that, I will, again, move that my resolution passed.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for the substitute resolution. May I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. I will do a roll call. Any question before? Okay, Dalton?
I am for.
Fisher?
I'm staying.
Okay. Denson?
Um.
Simpson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
You got that down?
You made history tonight, the first trip to do this.
Thank you, guys. I wanna get my, my oil from Southside. Now I have to go to the nearest.
But I'll just say, I feel like this is an education thing. And with the average person to try to read the things that you've been offering to us and to get into it, and then let anybody come that has a negative, tell us what it is. But hey, until you do, it sounds good and it's not like it's a new thing on the block. Like you said, it's been around sixteen something.
You mentioned, you mentioned my mother. And when my mom first heard that I was gonna, this was gonna be my economic piece, she ran out of the house to begin with, went on, 'cause she thought it was the evil cousin. And even, even when I explained to her what it was and she was thoroughly convinced, she said, "You still can't do it." And I said, "Why can't I?" She said, "People will talk about you." I said, "Mom, people talked about me before I came in the building. They wanna know if I was gonna be a boy or a girl, so..."
But she was right, and that's your education in this area is what will be.
And I'll say that I didn't miss this guy until I saw him in the paper with, as a matter of fact, the day, the first day I started on the oil, I got the carrier record and saw your board supervisor where they, they tabled it. And I said, "You know what? If I was there telling my story that didn't have to do with, you know, didn't have to do with clothes or whatnot, but health, and, you know, I, I just felt like that I could help him out." Because I'm not a political person. I just, yeah.
Thank you, Al. Thank you. We're, we're continuing with our meeting.
Counsel, have any problem with this substitute motion being plagiarized in other governing bodies?
Your, your fault.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, moving, moving on. The consent calendar. All matters of the consent calendar are considered routine and will be approved in one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a council member and may be voted on separately. The, in the consent calendar, it is made up of the minutes of the regular town council meeting held on January 12th, 2015, and the work session held on January 26th, 2015. The bill sheet, we have been handed amendments to the bill sheet with additions and it brings the total up to ninety-four thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and thirteen cents with the additional bills. Any questions, comments?
Just a quick change on the work session minutes. It has me as absent. If we can revise that to came in late?
Right, it's in the, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's in there, but on the, on the top, it says absent council.
Well, you were absent at the time.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and it also had in there.
I corrected it.
Yeah, we correct, we corrected.
Okay, perfect. That'll work, that's.
And, and there's also, in the copy that you have, it says that a councilman made a motion and then Mr. Fisher seconded and it was Councilman Sis. We, we added that this morning.
Robbie.
Oh, excuse me, Knight, Knight, excuse me, Knight, that, so we, we attended, so.
I knew you were late, so I'm sorry.
Perfect. I move we approve the consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded on favor by aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay.
Does that include the addition of?
Including the additions.
I approve.
Okay, town managers' report.
As you know, we voted to purchase the tractor. I solicited three bids from our local banks for the financing of the tractor. I wanna thank all three of our local banks for offering bids. Benchmark Community Bank's bid was 1.99 with no fee. All of these were a three-year term. Citizens Bank offered 1.85 with no fee. And First Citizens Bank offered 1.79 with a $250 origination fee. When you do the math and term it out, the low bid, what goes to Citizens Bank. I would like to ask council for authorization to sign that note.
This'll move.
Okay, it has been moved that we accept Citizens Bank bid for three years at 1.85. Second?
I'm sorry, what was this, the paper?
The tractor.
The tractor, okay, the second.
Tractor.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any question? All those in favor by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay.
Thank you.
Bid accepted.
Recently, it came to my attention that we have, times are changing, as everybody knows, and I think Phil is probably one of the biggest proponents of moving forward in our town. A lot of our ordinances, as everybody knows, were enacted way back when. Some of them still apply. They were, they were thought about and they're good ordinances, but some of them may need to be thought about a little bit. And this particular one deals with our zoning in residential one and residential two. The basic definition of an R1 is a low density. It's designed mainly for quiet living. I can get specific on it. I brought, I brought the reading of, of both in case you wanna hear that, but you've probably read it before. R2 is another section that is residential two that allows certain things to take place that are not allowed in, in R1, specifically two, two things. One, professional offices, and the second is home occupations as defined. And, and let me read what that definition is. You may, you may know where I'm going with this, but, uh, I can't find it. Anyway, basically what it says is that it's, here it is. Occupation carried on by an occupant of a dwelling as a secondary use in connection with which there is no display and no one is employed other than members of the family residing on the premises, such as the rental of rooms to tourists, the preparation of food products for sale, and similar activities provided that no home occupation shall create parking problem, create an oxysoda, or create an objectional noise level. That's the definition of home, a home occupancy in R2. What I propose for council to think about is simply this, with the internet now being what it is and the changes that have been made in technology, there are a whole lot more businesses that are being conducted in homes. Some people never leave their house and, and operate businesses and honestly, we don't even know what they're doing. This particular case came forward and I think that we need to look at that and I'd like council's permission to get Tessie to look into how we could possibly allow certain things. And we've gotta be, I think we need to be particular. And a lot of it has to do with off-street parking. If, if you ask me where I see problems is, is where, where you draw the line and whose call that is. That's something that we probably need to think about. The other thing that crossed my mind, we're gonna talk about garbage ordinances, is how much trash or whatever is, is generated from that. Would it be necessary to charge them a business rate on, on garbage? Don't know. May not be. But all of those things are, leave it up to judgment, but I do think it's time to probably look at making some changes in R1 sections and allow. And quite honestly, we've got some businesses already in R1. Reason you don't hear about it is the very fact, the home occupancy explanation, you don't have any traffic problems and nobody complains about it, honestly. Hairdressers that have been in town forever, you know, in various places in R1s and one or two come at a time and nobody, nobody's bothered by that. So, if, if I can get permission from council to get Tessie to look into that and how we might rewrite that to allow for this type of business in an R1, I'd like to do that. And we, we don't have to talk about it. You can think about it till continuing business if you like. We talked about the garbage can ordinance. There were some things in your packet, I think Tessie provided some thoughts on the changes that we proposed there and basically, comes down to three things. The allowance of a 35-gallon can is what started all of this, basically, because sizes have changed and ours is no longer the case. We talked about limiting each residence to three cans. And the third thing was any additional cans that a residence would incur a $5 per can Another gray area, it would almost have to be out there all the time. It's, puts a lot of burden on our garbage man. If somebody drags one out, a fourth one or a fifth one, once a month and then carries it back, how, how do you keep up with that? That, to me, is a difficult question as far as enforcing. The litter part of our concern, I think we've already got everything we need in place to enforce that under our police. So, we could, again, ask Tessie to rewrite our current ordinance and we need to have a public hearing to decide, to hear feedback from the public on this issue before we make any changes. I'd kinda like to get that before our next meeting in March, if that's okay with everybody. Incorporate these three things and then we'll present it to the public and have some discussion and look at it.
Wade, I missed a meeting, so I don't know if this came up. I think maybe Shirley mentioned it one time, back when we first started discussing it. And depending on how vigorously we choose to enforce this, is it gonna be an undue burden for our workers to really make sure they replace the lid on the can?
No, it should be done. It's, it's an issue that I've, I've addressed many times and will continue to do so.
One of my lids was brutally run over by a car in a recent windstorm. And they put it back there. Did it?
I've, I've mentioned that several times. I mean, and, you know, basically, if we're gonna enforce an ordinance that says you have to have it racked and you have to have a top on it, then our guys have to be careful that, that we're not the reason it's not on.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing something that was gonna be an undue burden.
No, not at all, not at all.
Any other questions for the town manager?
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Just to update everybody on the sewer project, some of the actual lining began today on East Tennessee Avenue 600 or 700 block. That's the first lining that has, has been put in. So, we're really, we're really moving forward. The project is approximately 32.6% complete with about 7.8% of the available funds spent. I know there's a broad difference there, but that's because it's gonna start getting closer because of the lining, so. Let's see, the project itself is currently on schedule. It's scheduled for the August completion. I have asked Mike Wilson of Hurt and Profit to attend our March meeting. He'll be doing a presentation, basically of what they found. You'll see some video, you'll see some video of some pretty bad stuff, and then some of the corrections that have been made. So everybody will know where the money's being spent. It's all on the ground, so you just don't see it, so. And that's basically everything I have.
Any questions? Okay, town attorney.
Yes, I have been working on the general things and then to make some comments on general being general buildings, taxes, just general things like that. And then to make some quick comments on what Wade has raised tonight with the zoning ordinance. What we'll need to do, if it's the council's desire to do so, is to look into, number one, in the intent part of R1, it specifically says no home occupations. We would have to take that out. Number two, we would have to amend the list of uses in the R1 zoning and we would have to really think about how we want to do that. Number three is we need to think about the signage and do we want signs, do we not want signs? And as it says nail with the home office or the home occupation, you know, there's not really signs. So that's something to think about. And then number four, of course, is the parking. So, just a few things to be thinking about if that's council's desire to do. And then with the garbage ordinance, I'll be glad to rewrite it. You know, I did have a few things to change on it. You know, the issue of what's the definition of a residence, how many occupants, things like that. And then also, the one thing we want to be careful of is with the littering, I think there does have to be some level of, you know, intent there. So we need to be careful about, you know, making sure that if a person is really violating this ordinance by littering, that we can prove, you know, some sort of intent. Instead of, "There was a really bad windstorm. It blew over and, you know, my truck can get..." You know what I'm saying? Just there needs to be a level of intent there, so. But I think that with some of the serial violators, with pitchers and things like that.
The, the thing that I see is where they take the trash can and they keep stuffing it and stuffing it and stuffing it, even if the things are in a plastic bag and the lid's sitting up here and you've got the gap in there. And then even birds, squirrels and all, it's just that intent of where they, you know, is, "Come, come get me."
Yeah, yeah. And we'll just need to be careful with, you know, the way we are here to be sure that we can enforce it and that the people can't just, you know, if there is a serious offense, we need to make sure that we can say, you know, "You violated this ordinance" and that the person doesn't have, you know, another explanation for it. So, but I'll be glad to work on that.
I had a complaint in the last few weeks, a lady told me, and I think it's in Mr. Foss's area, right down from your house, there's a habitual, or so it's said, offender. And I was at this house and looking back and it looked like snow piles or something up there on the road. And they said it's like that all the time. And so, yes, this is important. And the habitual offender, I think you'll know the areas that they're just, we know they've got a lot of trash. And if you've got a big family, garbage, you're gonna have to find something like that. And the three cans or something takes care of that, should.
Yeah.
And get in one.
Yeah. If it is council's desire to, for me to rewrite the garbage ordinance and make sure that it's, you know, enforceable, you all just let me know and I'll be glad to do it.
I have, I have a question. What about our grass that we talked about last time?
Yes, and I did look into that and Wade and I had an email, Wade, about her last week and we discussed it. I do believe that the way that the state code is written, 15.2901, it just kind of generally requires some sort of notice be given. And it also requires that only one notice is given every year. It does not specify, you know, that the grass be a certain length before they're notified. So I think that we may be okay with doing that if we want. Now, could there be a challenge in court? You know, if we put a lien on the property and the person challenges and said, you know, "You should have sent me a specific notice"? Yeah, they may have a valid argument there. But the way that the ordinance reads is that it's certainly open at this point to be able to do that. And if a person comes back later and wants to protest it, then certainly, you know, that's something that we can take up then. And then, of course, the other issue is too, is, you know, what the ordinance requires is just that the grass, you know, a requirement of a reasonable height. So, another solution to the problem may be to decrease that reasonable height that we have now. to do that. And if a person comes back later and wants to protest it, then certainly, you know, that's something that we can take up then. And then, of course, the other issue is too, is, you know, what the ordinance requires is just that the grass, you know, a requirement of a reasonable height. So, another solution to the problem may be to decrease that reasonable height that we have now. Because I think we're now, what, 10 inches? And, you know, maybe that's just too much and it needs to come down a few inches or whatever council would desire to put a curb on the tall grass and kind of get there before it's a real, you know, like, two feet tall, or however tall it is.
Another problem that we have, and it's in our ordinance, is that people are responsible for the grass to the road. Between the sidewalk and the road, it's their responsibility to cut it. We've got some that, the rebels who say, that's not my property and I'm not going to cut it, belongs to the state, VDOT specifically, and that's true. But our ordinance says that they have to cut it. So, we run into that quite often, too. And you send a crew out to cut that part? Yeah, we do, and we bill them. So, I don't know if we need to look at that again, too, or reinforce it, is what we need to do. Why they do it, I don't know, but they do it.
Maybe they don't want to cut off their bays out on it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean...
We had an awful year last year.
Yeah.
Awful.
And I think that we do have, you know, the state enabling statute is open enough to be able to take care of the problems that we're currently facing. And, you know, some of the problems are caused by the ordinance, you know, those past just a few years ago that I wrote. So, we can certainly correct those problems.
And what our intent, my intent for this is not to send it out once a year and then not let anybody know that we're going to cut the grass.
Yeah.
That's not my intention. My intention is to go to the door and say, you need to cut your grass or we're going to cut it, and give them two to three days, not 10, and if they don't cut it, we're going to cut it. And that way, it doesn't get, right now, it's 10 inches, then it's a 10-day letter. And during heavy growing season, y'all know this yourself, you can't keep up with it. It's almost impossible to cut. That's why we bought that bush hog last year, that small five-foot bush hog, specifically to cut people's yards, so.
And we can also linger with the 10-day notice, too.
The other thing, while we're on the subject, there are more and more empty homes in town that either are foreclosed or whatever. I know several that have just walked away. They've just walked away from their property. And we've got two problems there. We've got potential blight, and then we've got, who do we contact about keeping the yard up? So, that's something else that we need to look into.
Unfortunately, still the responsibility of the owner for that, which doesn't really solve our problems.
Right.
But as long as the person is the record owner of it, they're the ones responsible for it.
So, we'll just have to keep cutting them and keep billing them and billing the owner of record. And at some point, get liens on that property, they may sell at some point and get it back, but it's an increasing burden for the town.
Any update on the blighted buildings we've been looking at?
Still working on the blighted buildings. And Wade and I actually did talk about it today, and we are working on it, just haven't gotten there. But we'll work.
I'm going to the alleys, who's responsible for the alleys.
Homeowner.
Homeowner.
Yeah. Again, it's in the ordinance. Yeah. I mean, most people cut to the edge of the alley anyway, and a lot of people cut the center.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the center part.
Yeah. I mean, you could technically not cut that and we would, because the alleys belong to the town, but, again, if you go cut your property and take care of it, it looks like you would complete the job, but that's just me.
Any other questions for the town attorney? Okay, moving on to committee reports, community development.
Yes. I had the pleasure of attending a breakfast, a very early morning breakfast up at, I keep wanting to say REA, it's the SEC, it was REA when I left here, but anyway, it's Southside Electric Corporate Headquarters. And the president, the new president within the year, isn't it, Dr. Al Roberts, came to talk about a corporation that they have met to train the pole climbers at the community college. And I thought this was a great opportunity to have people working together in a community to make things go and to offer this to them. And they said, a lot of people, young men, might be afraid of heights and they don't know it until they get up there. And so, this is a kind of introduction course that they would give to let them know what's there. First off, a lot of people don't even know what's there. So, but I like the idea of a corporation, of a course, to have a strong community college in our area is the benefit. And I kept pushing for the older people. The mid-age and the older people, the things that come out, continuous learning, you're never too old to start learning something. So, it was my pleasure to do that.
Anything on Lipscomb and Stratton?
No, I don't know anything other than, I reread that everything is just going along.
Okay. Any questions for community development? Okay, economic development.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to give an update on HB 2303 unless you wanted to do that for your report.
You go right ahead.
Okay. Well, for those of you who don't know, last council meeting, we passed a resolution encouraging our delegate incentive to advance any legislation that would, A, prohibit individuals being released from VCVR to come to Crew unless they have pre-existing positive connections to the area, and two, to inform the localities, the chief law enforcement officer and the Commonwealth's attorney, when an individual's about to be released, include us in those pre-release plans. Well, Delegate Wright proposed a piece of legislation, HB 2303, that takes care of the second part of that. That would let the Commonwealth's attorney know, let the chief law enforcement officer and the locals know. And our mayor made a trip down to talk to the subcommittee about the resolution that we passed and our concerns. And from that, it passed subcommittee, passed committee, and last Friday, it passed the House. Now, it's going to go off to the Senate, and it also passed the House unanimously.
Ninety-nine to zero.
So, we should be good with that. So, it really shows you what a small local government can do. We, in such a short time, General Assembly was already in session when we asked Delegate Wright to do that, he did it, and it passed. We had a concern, and it's about to be law.
May I add something to that? I, when, the one thing I wanted to read to you all, and this came off today's because the Senate hadn't voted, and I wasn't, I was surprised at what, I don't know, they might have added because it wasn't originally. It says, "In preparing the conditional release plan, the department shall notify the attorney of the Commonwealth, the chief law enforcement officer, and the governing body for the local, that is, the proposed location of the respondent's residence upon his conditional release." And I didn't know that that had been put in there.
Right, yeah, they did include some language. They also changed it from consult with to notify.
Yeah. I know, so I was pleased that that was in there.
Absolutely.
Communication.
So, you know, little Crew can make state law pretty easily.
We haven't gotten it yet. One more.
Knock on wood.
And what we're really asking for is respect. If you're going to send somebody into this area, have the respect for the people that are trying to help.
It's all about communication. We've had solid communication with VCVR, with our major employer roundtable, and this, and we found out a year or so ago, from when we had representatives talk to us after the last SVP was released in Crew, it's not really their fault. It's not the facility's fault, it's just an oversight in the procedure. They'll, they do what is required of them in the procedure, and it was just an oversight when that was drafted. So, we identified that oversight, asked to have that loophole closed, and it looks like it's going to be. So, good job, everyone. Sandra Tanner from Virginia Tourism will be coming down on two days to essentially meet with individuals in the community, not town officials, it's more of a community thing, to get ideas on tourism and marketing, identify the needs and vulnerabilities, identify the assets that we have, and create a tourism plan. This is something that I've mentioned before, and it's going to be a two-day event for any citizens interested. It'll be on March 26th from 9:30 to 5:00, and April 2nd from 9:30 to 5:00. And anyone is welcome. We just ask that if you commit, you commit to both days. So, I know it's a big time commitment, but lunch is included. And it would really help our community, and it's going to be a great thing moving forward with tourism and marketing. The Historical Association is going to be having a, if you'll recall, they had a Christmas event, Christmas music at the Old Brick Church the weekend before. So, they're going to be having a, they're looking at having another one on the Saturday before Easter, and have some of the same people come and just do some community music for the, some music for the community. So, come out to that, look forward to that. I'll have more on that in, at our March meeting. Kwanzaa is having another pancake supper, very exciting. I know, I'm excited. On March the 26th at the community center. So, mark your calendars and come out for that. For those of you who don't know, we've taken a lot of the outreach initiatives that we've established with the town, the Facebook, the town email, updating the town calendar, things like that, and asked one of our employees, Beverly, in the town office, to take those because when it comes to council, one of us may not be here in the future. So, to have a member of council do those day-to-day things means that it's dependent on that person to always be there. And this just continues the initiatives if and when one of us is ever going. So, we've done that. That looks like it's great I've met with her a couple times. Haven't sent her an email yet, but she's been updating that calendar frequently and really working with the Facebook page. It's done a lot more than I ever did. So, she's really taking the reins on that. Quick question, is the town office open on Monday? Nope. Okay. And just another quick question, because I'll look it up if we don't have it, but do we have the resolution from Delegate Wright for the National Cowboy Day for older new business?
I had it.
If not, I can just look it up online.
Good thing I had it, but I don't have it right here at my fingertips.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to facilities, park and recreation. Do you have Steve's?
I do. Steve wrote, well, Tiffany wrote. Stevie wanted to report to everyone that he supports all the resolutions that will be presented. He supports and is in favor of the hemp. He supports our trash ordinance that we talked about. He wanted to report that the baseball and the softball sign-ups, February 14th, 21st, and the 28th, that's from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., it's at the hospitality Beamer Field, at the room at Beamer Field. Crew Fire for Youth Recreation Association baked potato dinner will be February 22nd, fundraiser, 12:30, it's $6, and that's at the Crew Fire Department. And he wanted to announce, I guess, that the 2015 state tournaments for Debs and Bells softball will be held in Crew.
That's nice.
That's always a big deal.
Yeah. Okay.
He thanks you for your support.
Steve, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
It was in the minutes that this K.I.S.K., it's a...
Kiosk.
Kiosk. I wasn't, kiosk, I wasn't familiar with this, and so I went online, tried to pull some up. I pulled all kinds of interesting things up, and I thought, is this a permanent thing that's being built over there?
Yes.
The chamber. The Chamber of Commerce is doing that.
And we approved it?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't remember.
I think it's been working, the Chamber has been working on this for two years now. I think when I came into office, but...
So, it goes that way.
Yes.
I started this up, I haven't remembered this, but this is, will be something similar to what we've had in the past, food area.
Well, basically, it's a sign.
A sign, okay. That's the tourism. Got you. Okay, I'm with you.
It's two-sided, three-sided deal.
So, they can...
Information, anything going on in the town.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, finance.
Everything looked like it's in order, but it looked like Tiffany didn't spend as much money last month. It'll probably show up next month.
Okay, any questions for the finance? Okay, Public Works and Infrastructure is absent. Do you have anything, sir? Okay.
Nothing that y'all don't know about.
Vice Mayor Personnel?
Well, I want to thank Beverly for being willing to take on...
Absolutely.
It's a big job to keep up with all of those notices, and I, too, noticed that she's really getting her feet on the ground with it, and I'm sure it's going to look even better as she gets more used to it. But it really was a nice thing for her to agree to do that. On a less positive note, there were some, and it disturbs me, there were some negative comments about town employees on Facebook, not our Facebook, actually, it's Facebook, that town employees might be lazy, and that disturbs me as chairman of the Personnel Committee. There are certainly issues with infrastructure and water breaks and that sort of thing, and a lot goes into making a decision as to whether or not that's an emergency situation that needs to be taken care of in the middle of the night, or it's something that can wait for a working day. But I do want to assure the public that town employees' willingness to work is not part of the consideration. And I thought it was most unfortunate that people come out in the middle of the night to inspect an area and then are referred to as being lazy. It's not fair.
I think it's important that we do address these things when they come up in a positive way, like you've just done, because there is a tendency, I call it throwing darts. You step back and from behind a woodpile or something, just throw darts at people that are doing things. And for something to be said out loud of derogatory statement, it can hurt, and it can do damage, and then a person will repeat it that doesn't even know the facts. So, I think if we can find a way, in a positive nature, if you have just done and addressed things, that are being circulated, that I don't know how we do it, but I think it would be great, because there are, it's unfair, but it's a lot of just casual talking. A lot of times, people don't mean a thing by it, they're just talking. But I think to jump right in and say what they are doing.
Well, it's, you know, and it's, social media is part of our times, and it's very easy to make a comment, once you see a post, to make a comment that you really don't know anything about.
Exactly.
And most people don't mean any harm. However, if, in my mind, if you were the guy out there in the middle of the night in the cold and the wet, trying to figure out what to do, it's very discouraging, and they have a hard job.
Well said.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, public safety, sir?
No report.
No report. Okay. Go back to our Vice Mayor on the Town of Crew competency plan. Here I am giving...
Here I am giving you homework again. Yes. And don't tell me the dog ate your homework. In our last, um, business meeting at the, um, end of January, uh, I asked for any further input on the objectives and goals. I received a few things that were minor corrections, but nothing major. Uh, so, now what we have left to do is to update the other parts of the comprehensive plan. Um, I did try to get in touch with, uh, Kelly Lewis today. She's sick too. Hadn't been in for a couple of days and they're not sure when she'll be feeling up to coming back in. But I will touch base with her as soon as, so she's a, up and back at work. Um, what I've done is gone through the, our comprehensive plan, other than the goals and objectives. And just listed, I went through the table of contents, listed the pages. I've given you copies of those pages, um, except for I neglected to copy the first several pages, pages one through nine that I assigned to the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Manager. But I think we have that. Um, and I, I want you just to take time to read it. They're signed according to the committees and I tried to match up the committees with the parts of the plan that, um, would come under the heading of what that committee is usually in charge of. Just make any notes that you would like to do. I think we're planning to have a business meeting at the end of this month too, so that if I could get that back, either email or make notes, throw it in my box or bring it to that meeting, then I think we would be at the place where I can, um, meet with Kelly and, um, start to finalize things. What I would like, what we have done is we have, as of the end of November, we had our, um, citizen questionnaire survey. That was completed and that was one of the required pieces. So, that is completed. What I would like to ask for is for a motion tonight to move forward with those goals and objectives, just that we're accepting those. That doesn't mean that when we approve the entire comprehensive plan that we would not, um, we can still correct things and make changes. But I would like to know from council that we accept those goals and objectives so that Kelly can begin putting that together. As well as Wade and I met, and, um, you remember from our business meeting, Kelly suggested a different format. And I think Wade and I kind of came to the conclusion that if we want to put it in a bulleted or paragraph form, that would be fine. The overall timeline, of course, is the five years of the plan. But I would still like to have, um, a status place so that as we review, we can, um, indicate the status. And that way, citizens also would know where we are. So, as we complete things, then we would fill in the completion date. If the status is ongoing, then we would indicate that. One of our, um, under one of our strategies, it did say that we would review our plan, perhaps quarterly anyway. So, that would be the perfect time to fill that part in.
I'd just like to say, I, I was listening to the, um, uh, I, since I wasn't here for that part of the meeting, I was listening to the, uh, to the recording earlier today. Um, I did, uh, I, I do understand that there was some discussion about how comprehensive the comprehensive plan should be. Um, I'm on the opposite side of what was discussed at the meeting. I think it should be more comprehensive. I, I know the, uh, the theory is if it's too comprehensive and we don't achieve every goal, people will get angry. I'm okay with that in that our goals should be ambitious. We understand that we're not going to achieve everything, but we need to push ourselves further and be held accountable for things that we should have achieved and didn't achieve. Uh, so, I like the, uh, the goals as written and, uh, and would, uh...
And I agree with Councilman Miskovic. We can't be afraid to put things in there.
Right.
Even though we may feel that down the road, some of it will not be as realistic. And, and that's why I say if we have a status area, if we come to a, if we approach a goal and we find out times have changed, five years is not a great long time, but sometimes this year, we think something's a great idea and something else comes along and we have to allow ourselves a chance to change. But I believe if we're transparent in stating our status, um, talking about it on a regular basis in open meetings where we can answer questions as to why something wasn't possible. I don't think the goals and objectives that we have at this point are that specific.
Right, but I will say, there, there was a good point. We don't want to get too overly detailed, like, you know, by attracted by this state. Rather than do that, say, like, like we have in there, formulate a plan for, uh, for rotating the, uh, the police cars. So, we know in the future to plan for a police car this year, uh, rather than simply ha- having to buy it when it, uh, when it comes up. So, having the plan, but not necessarily car this year, tractor this year.
And I think the wording that we have used allows us that flexibility.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
You need a motion?
I would like a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, um, on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to go along with the, um, updated and completed goals and objectives. All those in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
Thank you, I feel more comfortable telling Kelly that she can move forward than I have to reinvest the wheel.
Okay, we are going to skip over the police chief's report and go to my report. Um, some, I simply have some things that I, I wanted to let you all know, just in case you hadn't noticed. First thing was that the Friends of the Library got a light over the book drop box, put up today at their expense, which I think is, is a good step. They paid electrician. Um, and, uh, if you see it on, there, there's some adjustments. They, the electrician was having to wait till tonight and all. But, um, I'm real pleased that the Friends of the Library stepped up on that. The light was donated and they took up the initiative to pay electrician. So, I, I think that that's really nice, 'cause I explained to them we no longer had on our staff, a electrician that could do that. Uh, second thing, um, the Kiwanis had approached me on two counts. One is, and which will come under new business, is that with it being the hundredth year celebration of the founding of the Kiwanis. The second thing is that they said they were, they were, um, as a group, looking for a project. And since they no longer did the chicken festival, and, um, they wanted to do spring cleanup. Now, don't all, don't get all excited, not taking that away from, they need, they need assistance. And I suggested that since homecoming, we usually have the spring cleanup a week or so before, that, um, maybe we can work in conjunction with that. Because like they said, they, they would be needing supplies and things. And I, I just wanted to let you know that it has not been completely formulated, but they did want to really help out with this. And, um, I had given some ideas of maybe, you know, a school, um, and all that. Um, I will see if one of the council people will take on this, um, uh, formulating of a plan with them, you know, with the town's assistants and all. And I'll do this after the meeting, uh, before the end of February. But they, um, I think that's nice that they, that they wanted to see that. And I know, I've, I have noticed, uh, on weekends, that one of the Kiwanis is, is out there picking up trash and, uh, and on our way to church the other day, my husband and I saw an individual out there just going right down the line, you know, picking up the, the things on. That's what we all need to do. So, I, I really, you know, congratulate them. Uh, Phil talked about, uh, Delegate Wright. If, listen, as life goes on and you are presented at a quarter after six in an evening, that you're presented that you need to be someplace if you can the next morning and all. And you have the, the nice leisure of a police chief who will go with you and get you there and all, that, um, don't pass it up. Don't think, "Oh, I can't do it," because it was, it was delightful. It was delightful. And the people up there, I mean, when they started asking me questions and the doors opened, things that I knew that wasn't in our thing, but they opened the doors for me to say what needed to be said about our community. Because other communities have the same situation. And communication, that's the whole thing. And, and, you know, it was not browbeating anybody. It was just, you know, being able to find something that, that we felt like was a need. And, um, hopefully, it'll be, I, you know, hitting a home run and all. But Delegate Wright and I were very excited when we came out of that subcommittee room. I, I, it was a nice experience. The, um, homecoming. I had a call today, um, from Sue Williamson. Uh, we all know that, um, Helen Key Weston is really having a hard time with her health and all. And, um, they are getting the home committee, homecoming committee together and all. Um, I do want to talk to, um, I'm sorry that Steve's not here. One of the concerns is that, you know, on Friday nights, they have the family night up at Hoover Park. And I know this is early enough in the, uh, eve- in evening, in the, um, the spring, for spring, with, I don't know, um, Tiffany probably knows better how the, the ball make up, the ballgames make up the, the, um, schedules. But I know that Friday night and ballgames seem to go together. So, if there may be something that we can, since it's so early. And then on Saturday, if games could, you know, possibly start at three. And here again, I know last year, like with soccer and all rain, you can't, you know, the acts of God, you, you have to go with the flow. But if, you know, we could have the activities that we are bringing the children at a time, you know, that the children could participate in them and not be, uh, so that was one of her concerns and all. And, um, if any of you can remember the young lady's name that sang so beautifully at the ballpark and all, that would be helpful and get to me later for, for Sue. I wanted to remind you all that Monday is President's Day and it is a town holiday for the employees. So, there will be no trash pickup and all. Monday and Town Hall will not be open. And we will have a sign out so that the, the people that come up, you know, won't have to come all the way up the steps. I don't know if any of you have seen this little truck, well, it's not a little truck, it's a big truck, hurrying, scurrying around that has C and S signs on it. I noticed, uh, Saturday that, um, the stop sign and the route number, everything was being completely done down on Lee Street. So, I gather that the V dot is going around. I saw them today, uh, replacing the, now, these are not your Lipscomb and Stratton or, uh, Lee Street signs. These are the route numbers of the state route and the, um, si- the, um, stop signs and they're using the metal poles in there. So, I think that's, will also assist, you know, with finding things around town when, when emergencies. But, um, that is going on and I think that, that is a real plus.
I saw that, I thought you done got on them.
And I, I can't...
Why are they here served?
And they were really working hard. I, I just, I, I looked at the, and the only thing that we got on them about is they had the V and not the VT up there.
What's wrong with that?
Just a personal preference. And all, just a personal preference and all. Um, that is, that is all that, that I have, uh, for the mayor's report. Do you have any questions of me? Okay, going on to new business. I did hand council a proclamation template that the Kiwanis had asked of me to give to you all, to see if you all would do a proclamation. And I talked to them again today and when, um, if you all agree upon this, that, um, when we got it typed up on good paper and with a seal and all, that Tuesday, March tenth, which is their meeting day next month, uh, if you also elect to pass this, that the proclamation could be presented to them and it, and that would be their day designated in their club and all. So, um, I leave this up to, you know, council, your feelings.
Mayor, I think the Kiwanis have done a, yeah, a lot for the, a lot for the community of the past. Uh, I think our local Kiwanis have been there for eighty-nine years or so. Seventy-five, maybe, they just told us at the, uh, anyway. Um, and with all these, these things that they still continue, well, they've done the, uh, chicken festival, which is a big thing.
Pancake suppers.
Pancake suppers, everything that they do. I think this is the, uh, the least we can do for, uh, to show our appreciation for them.
Okay.
Make a motion to draw a proclamation.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and, and, um, I will be glad. And if you all would like to come with me on that evening at seven o'clock to present it to them, I would be more than happy. I'm glad that they thought about this, you know, to let us in on it too. Thank you, okay. New business, I, um, I believe there were some things that were asked to, um, that maybe we needed to tend to. Do any of you have any?
Mayor, I do. We, uh, we spoke about it briefly, well, we didn't speak about it, we, uh, we were looking at it. Uh, we, when Delegate Wright was here, we, uh, we, we spoke with him briefly about it. His, uh, Day of the Cowboy proclamation. And, uh, one of our local residents is working, uh...
I, I contact, I called it, but I did not get a response, but I, I, she hadn't been well.
Kim with, uh, the quilt shop in town is, uh, is heavily involved with it. Um, and the proclamation essentially says, "Whereas pioneering men and women commonly notice cowboys help establish America's western frontiers, and whereas the cowboy archetype transcends gender, generations, ethnicity, geographic cords, and political affiliations, and whereas the cowboy embodies honesty, integrity, courage, compassion, and determination, the cowboy or the caro spirit exemplifies patriotism and strength of character, and whereas the core values of traditional code of West expressed in the cowboy code of conduct at the national day of the cowboy continue to inspire the pursuit of the highest caliber of personal integrity, and whereas the cowboy is an exercise steward of the land and its creatures and illustrates the importance of protecting and preserving the nation's natural resources, and whereas the cowboy ranching traditions have been a part of the American cultural landscapes since fifteen-twenty-three, and today's cowboys continue to preserve and perpetuate this unique element of America's heritage, and whereas the cowboy and its horse are a race central thing and lecture our film, poetry, photography, and music, and all attendance at radio exceeds thirty million fans worldwide." Uh, and it goes on and on and on. Sorry, could you...
Obviously, of course.
Before you go ahead further, put that in writing and present it.
All he needs is a coffee machine.
It's a small idea.
I would like to, I would like to, uh, propose, and we all received a copy of this, I think, in our, uh... Okay, so we've all read it previously, so that was an exercise in futility. Uh, I would, uh, I would move that we accept that resolution, um, and proclaim the Fourth Saturday in July in two thousand and fifteen as the National Day of the Cowboy. Uh, and speaking to that, uh, motion, um, it, Delegate Wright's done a lot for us. Um, this is one of his projects. Uh, one of our own business persons is heavily involved in this project. And it's great for tourism and marketing. It's one more thing for people to do during the summer here in Crew and in the outside area. So, I make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say, now, if you read all that.
It has been moved and seconded, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so carried.
We need to make sure we get that in the comprehensive plan, under the tourism.
Right, right, absolutely.
Yes, okay. Any other new business?
Uh, are we going to be having, starting our budget work sessions soon?
Soon.
Soon, okay. Uh, one thing I'd like everyone to consider, and it was brought up, I believe, by Councilman Fisher at the last one, and I've really noticed it going to meetings at night during the winter and in individuals' houses, it's incredibly hard to see, uh, house numbers. And people have their house numbers wherever they want and that's fine. They have their decorative house numbers. What I'd like to see is something sort of like what we, what they have in the county, or just the nine, nine-eleven numbers outside in front of the house. That way, our emergency responders can see the, uh, see the house numbers. And it's something that's been brought up at fire department meetings. Councilman Fisher brought it up as a, uh, as a concern for, uh, EMS. I don't want to put words in his mouth. Um, and just in my personal experience, going to individuals' houses, I don't know whose house I'm knocking on until I knock on the door. And I, I think it's a concern and something we need to look at in the next budget, uh, session.
We do.
One of our biggest concerns for rescue, and I'm sure fire is the same way, is the street signs. They need to be illuminated.
Okay.
And, uh, kind of like out in the Canada, so you can really read the signs when you come upon a location you need to go.
Okay, so if the Finance Committee, when, when they start their preliminary discussions before our budget session, they could look at the, um, look at those concepts and see if we can't maybe fit those into the budget, either now or over time.
And logic doesn't develop as far as the house numbers go either, because you've got an older town that is developed. And the third house down, the one on the corner, is one hundred. There's one house between us and I'm one-ten. We don't know where those other people are.
Well, if you ever notice...
There's a crowd there in the middle.
Down on, uh, on Carolina, on one side of, uh, of Carter, you, you're on one side of the street and the house number, uh, the, uh, the building numbers are even, the other ones are odd. You cross Carter and it's the opposite. So, where you were even are on... So where you were even are odd and where you are odd are even. I don't know if that's something...
But all this proves the fact that well illuminated, readable numbers are important because your emergency vehicles, we had a time when ambulances were trying to find us.
And it's still early in the year, but I just want to bring that up because it's, it's February and before we know it, it'll be July and we'll have a new budget.
Any more new business?
I, just speaking one more on budget. I know during the last session, we spent a lot of money, the last work session, on the tractor. I would just like to propose a policy where anything over a certain amount of money is reserved for these full council sessions. So we don't vote on things like cars or tractors or anything over, we'll say $10,000, unless it's an absolute emergency until we're here in full session.
Okay, you want to put that in the way of a motion?
I'd move, make a motion to that extent.
What's the amount?
$10,000.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that any expense over $10,000 be brought up at a regular council session unless it's an emergency.
Exactly.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay.
Just trying to purr transparency.
Continuing business. Okay. We have done, I had put a few things on here just to shake your mind that you not forget. The Atlantic Coast Pipeline, did anybody want to bring anything about that up?
Just that I think it was also great. We attended that and this will be coming across the top of the county. And more progress. Now, you can always say the yea and the nay, what's good and what's bad about something. And we talked to several, studied the maps. It's a go, it's guided hangups, but one of the men said the farmers are each negotiating individually, and I felt like they probably should have been represented. And that would have saved a little bit, but it's already happened, so no use to have a thought on that.
Okay, I believe you had...
I presented a resolution last month, two months ago, back in December, and we wanted to wait until the, until the meeting and see how all that went. So I'd like to move that resolution.
Okay.
Does anyone still have it on them?
I have it right here.
Great. Does anyone have any questions on the resolution?
Just don't read it.
Just don't read it. Again, no, let's specify that. Read it again because we have read it. Okay, we have a motion to do the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, a resolution that we had tabled. Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay. All righty. Then I had put, one thing I, I had put on here, the ordinance on the trash can, I think Tessie, our town attorney, asked that she needed a motion to write it up. How do you all?
A motion to write it up and then a motion for the written-up version to be advertised for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay.
If that's what you all want to do.
Okay.
So, second?
Okay, we have, let's take them one at a time. The first motion is to have the attorney write it up and are my council in agreement with that motion?
Yes.
And then second? Okay, all those in favor for that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, second motion.
I move that we advertise the resolution for the...
Trash cans?
Thank you, the ordinance, draft ordinance for a public hearing.
Okay, may I have a second? Okay, it has been seconded by Mr. Fisher. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay. One thing that we talked about last meeting, I think you were maybe here by then, was the camera.
Right, and I did some research at the request of council. First, the numbers for YouTube views. Our first meeting that we had, had on YouTube was the, was the most viewed at 153 views. The October meeting, 56. November dropped to 18. December, 15, that's of course the holidays. And then in January, even though we include the link in our monthly email, we did not send out an email in January, we had 11 views and that was only through the, through Facebook. So I'm sure that number would have been a little bit more had we had it. And then the grocery community collaborative meeting had 55 views. So it, we do get individuals to watch, like I mentioned at the last time. The town of Blackstone is looking at, looking at us as a model. There's citizens who've come here and talked to us and said how much they appreciate it. Not everyone can find a babysitter so they can come to a council meeting. It allows them to be able to take part in their government from the, from the comfort of their own homes if they, if they need to. Oh, and so I did some research on a, on a camera. I found one that is compatible with the software that I use. I have a Mac and I use iMovie on, on the Mac for editing. Found it on Amazon for $199. So I would move that we purchase this camera using funds from economic development.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussions, questions, comments, concerns?
I was just thinking about what you were, what we said earlier about council. I mean, we're not in life terms here. So if we buy a camera that's compatible with what you have, then down the road, if that falls on, and honestly, it's my opinion that if we can, want to continue, and I agree that it's a good thing, I think it should be town computers and software that we're doing.
I believe this would also be compatible with, with PC software. That said, I think, it's my opinion that the town should look at purchasing a Mac for things like the, if we ever do the TV channel thing again, things like this, any of our media related things and have it set in that corner in the, in the back room there. Because Macs are known more for their media capabilities.
I have a question. Does the iMovie also, you said you use iMovie, does that work with a PC too? Or is that just strictly Mac? I saw, I was asked.
I don't know. That's a good question.
Because there is a laptop in the mayor's office that is there that could be used. It's not Mac, but...
And there's other software that this is compatible for. It's not that the difficulty is finding, is a camera being compatible for new PCs. The difficulty in finding this one was for the current time where I'm currently using a Mac and just having it compatible that way. It's compatible, everything's compatible with PCs. Not everything is compatible with all the Mac software.
I think it would be sad if we don't pursue the technology because, and even if it's the lower numbers, it's just like so many of the things we've said, until the people get accustomed to it. And the more we talk about it and encourage people and say, did you, did you watch that? Did you see where we were discussing this? And let them know and catch them up to date, I think it would be important.
And it's good for us to, we can always go back to and refresh ourselves on.
Exactly. But technology is so changing that even if everything did get, but I agree that everything we purchase should begin to speak to one thing, like the Town Hall, everything on there. We should always be looking that it is compatible. We're not building a little unique unit over here to just take care of this problem. It's all...
Right.
...to speak.
And I will verify before I, before I purchase that.
Okay, we have a motion on the...
Right, I believe the council made the motion, that we purchase this camera for $199.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you to Tiffany for letting us use her camera for several months.
Any other new business? Let's see. Town manager, was there things we don't want to leave for? We've covered everything you needed motions on.
This is just a...
Not really.
Hypograph?
The discussion about the R1 and R2 changes.
That's right.
For, I'm trying to see if I can look into that.
Right, we, would council entertain the town attorney looking into the R1 and R2 zoning and perspective changes for our community?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Like sign for opposed? Okay, carried. Anything else?
Just one more quick thing, only because he called and asked. Dave Harley from HDLA, the landscaping firm out of Lynchburg, where are we on that? Are we still evaluating everything?
That's part of the plan.
It's part of the plan.
Okay, so part of the plan is to eventually have them propose to us with numbers and things?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
I think in the plan, it specifically states to do, to meet with them to develop the overall plan that he was talking about.
Perfect.
Of course, we didn't have any discussion about cost in there.
Right, right.
Well, they indicated that one might not, you know, just for the fun of it.
I think you were very optimistic in that interpretation of those comments.
No, that was the interpretation.
That was your optimistic interpretation.
Okay, council, any other? Okay, any particular comments from the citizens before we close? Yes, sir, Mr. Booth?
On the trash cans, was that 35 gallon max?
Yes, sir. Yeah, up to three.
And if you have more than three, you pay an extra five bucks.
That's right.
Is that the idea?
That's correct.
I agree with the vice mayor, the town board is not any good to living. I don't have anybody that said it.
Is there a provision in there for, do they have to be in a, in a...
Yes. They're supposed to be either in, in a confined...
Or secured.
Or they have to be secured by a chain and rack.
Or just state.
State.
That'll be in the...
That's all in there now.
Add for the, you're going to tell the public in the ad what specifically you need to do that, I think.
We can.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, but it's already in there. We'd be more advertising the changes, but...
And you get calls about it, no?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.